Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our August 19th, 2025 Board of Commissioners Meeting. Our first order of the business, if you are able, please stand and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, second item, agenda review. Bob?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
I would move the agendas.
Second. Got a motion and a second for the agenda. Is there any discussion? If there are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Our next item will be our bonds. If Candace and Christine want to join us? At this time, we'll be opening up our Blue Earth County Capital Improvement Plan and Notice to Issue Capital Improvement Bonds Public Hearing. Blue Earth County Finance Director Candace Sonic and Baker Tilly Municipal Advisor Director Christine Hogan are here to provide us information and answer questions regarding the item before the board. The hearing provides an opportunity for citizens to submit comments. Candace, would you please give us and introduce yourself and the capital improvement plans to the bonds?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'm Candace Sonic, Finance Director. Minnesota Statute, Section 373.40, authorizes counties to issue general obligation capital improvement plan bonds for specific types of public infrastructure improvements. Bonds issued by a county to finance improvements under an approved capital improvement plan are not subject to the election requirements of Section 375.18 or 475.58. The bonds must be approved by vote of at least three-fifths of the members of the county board in accordance with statutory requirements. Notice of the public hearing was published in the Mankato Free Press on August 6th, 2025. The county has prepared a capital improvement plan that outlines the justification and financial considerations related to the public works facility project. The total estimated cost of the public works facility project is approximately 40.3 million. To finance a portion of these project costs, along with the costs of the bond issuance, the county intends to issue 2025 capital improvement plan bonds in an estimated power amount not to exceed 30,570,000. We've reviewed the financial impact of the proposed bonds and estimate that the maximum annual debt service will remain within the legal limit of 0.12% of the county's estimated market value as required by statute. Does the board have any questions on the capital improvement plan?
Any questions from the board at this point? Thank you, Candace. For your report. At this time, I will open it up to public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and there is a five-minute time limit. The county administrator will give you a one-minute warning when your time is allotted. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the public bonds? Anyone wishing to comment on the public bonds? Seeing no public comments, I will bring it back to the board. Can I get a motion and a second for the five-year improvement plan authorization issuance of the sale of general obligation capital improvement plan bonds?
I'll move it for a vote.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing no questions, I would just like to make a comment. Candace, thank you so much for all your hard work. This started out some discussion several months ago. I think some of the commissioners were reluctant to do a bond at all, but because of some education and challenges we have coming up in the county in the future, we agreed that this makes a lot of sense to bring this forward. It looks simple at this table here because it's only a few-minute presentation and we authorize a $30 million bond, but we spent a lot of time, a lot of energy, to get to this point. So, thank you and your staff for all your hard work. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. All right, at this time, I would... Thank you. Where am I at here? I need Christine to give us some stuff, right?
This is Ms. Christine Hogan from Baker Tilly, our municipal advisor.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here today. Christine Hogan from, a director of Baker Tilly. I serve the county as the municipal advisor, and I'm just here to talk through a little bit of the details of the bond issue. So, in your pocket, you will have this document, and I'm just going to talk through this and I'll take questions. So, like Candace said, the county is going to be selling public bonds for our estimated amount is 29,185,000, and that's general obligation capital improvement plan bonds, Series 2025A. Those proceeds of those bonds are going to be used to finance the construction of the new public works facility as detailed in the CIP plan that Candace talked about and pay the cost of issuance related to the bonds. Of course, to issue bonds, you have to meet certain statutory requirements. In this case, these are being issued under statutes, Chapter 475, that gives the general obligation pledge, and Section 373.4, which is specific to a capital improvement plan bond issue. There are certain statutory requirements related to the statute 373.4, and that is the calculation of overall debt service cannot exceed 0.12% of the estimated market value of the county. So, we provide that calculation here that's in the document, which shows the maximum estimated debt service for the bond issue and any other outstanding CIP bonds, and it's well within the statutory requirement and, in fact, allows, still has quite a bit capacity for future debt issuance. The bonds are going to be paid with general obligation pledge, meaning agglorum taxes will pay the debt service, levy in '25, start collection in '26. The term of the structure is a 20-year repayment with approximately level debt service over that 20-year. We put an optional redemption. That just means that you're, at the 10th year, you're allowed to call the bond. So, if you have an opportunity to refinance them at a lower interest rate, you have that opportunity at 10 years. 10 years is a very standard optional call for a 20-year bond structure and very well accepted in the market. So, opportunity to call them in the future if you have surplus money or you want to refinance for a lower interest rate, that opportunity is available. Part of a public sale is you get the bonds rated. So, we will be going through a rating process. Actually, we have it listed here on September 3rd coming up here. So, we will meet with S&amp;P, Candace, Bob, Josh, and myself. S&amp;P will provide a list, an agenda, a list of questions. So, we will meet beforehand, go through all of those, and present those on the call. So, then, rating agency S&amp;P goes back to their committee. They discuss, and they come back with a rating. The county's current general obligation rating is AA+ by Standard and Poor's. So, they'll come back, give a rating, and provide a report. And when I come back to give the sale results, I'll talk through some of the comments that they provided in the report. So, a AA+ is an exceptional rating. The only higher one you can be is AAA. So, you know, the lower, your higher rating score lets you borrow at a lower cost of interest. So, that's an exceptional rating, and I don't see any reason why these bonds wouldn't get a similar rating. So, the issuance timeline, we're here tonight, we did the public hearing, or this morning, it's what used to be at-night meetings this morning. I love this. Is to hold the public hearing, and which was done, and to authorize the resolution setting the terms of the bond. Then, we are going to have a rating conference as September 3rd. We will be selling the bonds in competitive process on September 22nd, and then we will, the board will award those bonds the following day at their board meeting on the 23rd. And then, you'll receive the proceeds of the bonds on October 16th. With any tax exempt borrowing, there is certain post-issuance compliance. Two of those are, the two of them are arbitrage and continuing disclosure. So, those are things that we talk about when we issue the bonds, and we work with the county to make sure that those are in place. Those are compliance issues that are required, and I believe Baker Tilly provides those, both those services to the county. In conjunction with this financing, we work with the county, and Baker Tilly works closely with Dorsey and Whitney. They're the ones who put together the resolutions, and they provide opinions, and they review official statement, all that kind of information. So, I will just quickly go through just a couple of these attached schedules. The first one is a graph. This is a BDI graph. It's just an index that kind of shows your municipal bonds price. Now, this one looks a little scary because it's higher now, but to be honest, rates have come down since we started this process actually already, and specifically on the lower end of the yield curve. So, we've seen rates come down since we started this process six weeks ago even, about a quarter of a percent. So, there's really expectation that it's not going to go up. If anything, rates will continue to go down. So, I think by the time we're at the bond sale, we'll be in a very favorable place for a good sale. And again, this, this graph shows a general, 20-year, 20-year general obligation at 5.2. Our current estimate actually is 5.4, 5.3. So... Sources and uses is just showing the power amount of the bonds. We have estimated that they'll price with a premium. That premium, together with the power amount of the bonds, will fund the 30 million project cost and the total cost of issuance. That's variable on the day of sale. It could have less or more premiums, so that's why we have a set, not to exceed, set at a higher number of this than this. Typically, we are conservative. Well, we are conservative, so if anything, I would expect more premium. We'd be able to have a little bit lower bond size, but that's determined on final pricing. The next one is the pricing summary. I just kind of talked about this. You can see, we have a 10-year call in there. Coupons are higher than the yields. They're, excuse me, thereby reduce, generating a premium. And then, that last schedule just shows you a fiscal year amortization of debt service. As you can see, we've structured it to be level debt service, and on the day of sale, we can make any adjustments to the pricing and make sure that we still meet this level debt service over 20 years. And I'm happy to take any questions.
All right, any questions for Christine at this point?
Appreciate your work.
Yes, we'll be doing two items on this motion, but I need a motion to approve the issuance and the sale of the general obligation improvement bonds, Series 2025A.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Again, thank you. Same comments that I made on Candace's behalf, but good job. Appreciate it. I got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. This concludes our hearing and our process for the general obligation bonds. Thank you, Candace and Christine, for all your work. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move down to item number four, MCIT member report. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you doing today, Joe? Just introduce yourself, please.
Good morning. My name is Joe Samensky. I'm a risk management consultant with Minnesota Counties Intergovernmental Trust, or MCIT. I appreciate your time this morning. We like to connect every other year or so with our commissioners, and I appreciate the chance to talk to you. Today, we're going to talk about some of the numbers that we are working through going into this year, 2025, and we're going to start out by talking a little bit too about what MCIT is and what we're not, and a lot of that may already be familiar to you, but some friendly reminders, so to speak. So, MCIT started in 1979 with a really tough work comp market, and about a dozen or so counties got together to form MCIT. We're a joint powers entity, and we're not an insurance company, and that's a distinction that we always like to remind, that we're not in the private insurance world. The county's been with MCIT since 1980, so a long, long relationship, long positive relationship. MCIT was, was formed to provide tailored coverages to government operations, and we are, we take care of 81 of the 87 counties and approximately another 400 other associated members, such as fair boards and, and SWCDs and historical societies and watershed districts and the like. So, we don't have a profit motive. We're not like the insurance industry. We set ourselves apart on that and remind you that we're not here to hold or save money and give big bonuses to executives. That's just not part of what we do. There's no commissions. There's, there are no agents. All of this leading to trying to keep that dollar amount down, and our, our mission statement is, that's an important part of what we do, is trying to keep our prices reasonable for our members and still provide that protection for insurance needs. As far as what you can do at your level, there's a note here, Commissioners can make a difference. We always encourage you to embrace and, and support your operations in the form of risk management. The thought pattern being, let's try to nip it in the bud before it happens. Reduce it, sometimes eliminate risks. Some of the things that you do, and keep in mind, this is not a list of things you need to start doing. This is a list of things that keep doing well. Continue to learn how coverages apply from MCIT before making final decisions, and with this, do not hesitate to contact myself or others at MCIT if there's any questions about the coverages that may come into play in a decision for you. Having contracts reviewed by the county attorney and, and risk management consultants like myself is important. Staying alert for data and cybersecurity threats. Everybody has that on the front of their mind. It's a constant battle that we're, that we're chasing after to try to keep these bad actors at bay when it comes to cyber. Obviously, we always want to look into supporting safety with safety committees and programs to return injured employees to work, which, again, you're doing a great job. We won't talk more about the work comp aspect of what you're doing. I won't read the whole list off the page, but some things to think about. On the next page, we're going to talk about reinsurance a little bit, and if you're not familiar with it, in short, reinsurance is the insurance for insurance companies, in this case, the trust. We purchase reinsurance to help with the larger losses and to kind of moderate the effect of those large losses to our members. Reinsurance costs are going up at short, and there was a 10% increase on, on property reinsurance due to a 13% increase in, in values of property. due to a 13% increase in, in values of properties. When it comes to costs and the battles that we're working through, we're finding that this is a big aspect of what we're experiencing from direct increase in costs. We'll talk a little bit more about that in the next panel, but properties are going up dramatically. What we're doing to try to curb the effect of, of reinsurance going up is to consider our retentions or our deductibles for those coverages. So, these are to take care of large claims over a threshold, which is the large deductible retention. We've basically increased our casualty retention from 850,000 to 1 million per claim, and that saved an over 20% increase in that reinsurance premium. We also changed work comp from 500,000 to 1 million for the retention. That's a $470,000 increase in the premium. So, these are some of the things we're doing to try to feather in the effect of those rising reinsurance costs. With the next panel, total insured values continue to climb. This is the biggest driver for costs that we've had, and, and a good portion of our contributions, what you would call premiums in the private world, but your contributions to MCIT, a good part of it, the increases are due to the property values. You can see on the graph that the property values have been increasing at an increasing amount, and with that, you have a rise in costs of labor and materials to fix said properties, and that combined with the rising of reinsurance costs, and it's been quite the battle to try to keep these, these costs at bay. With all the negatives that you're hearing, there are some coverage enhancements we're happy to see with the, in 2025, with equipment breakdown coverages. There's some additional coverages for electronic circuitry impairment, cost to maintain green uncovered losses for buildings that, that have green designations, and some off premises equipment breakdown. So, a few things that were added into, expand coverage in, in, within all that bad news in the property world. On the next panel, we're going to talk about the rates, and this is not for the county necessarily, this is for the whole trust. And I'll draw your attention to some of the larger bars here on the, on the bottom side, the orange, which is workers' compensation. You see a pretty dramatic change there in 2023. And just to give you some background on that, that's when a lot of the COVID claims fell off, basically were resolved and came off the system. So, made a big change in the workers' compensation rates. On the upper right-hand side, this is that 11.2% for the blue, which is property liability. This is almost wholly drawn or caused by the, the property value issues that we were just talking about. With this, if you have seen the MCIT bulletin that was recently, that had recently come out, there is some good news in that the changes, the aggregate rates are unchanged for 2026. So, with all these increases, there's some good news on the horizon, just to keep that in mind. I'm kind of moving quickly with respect to time. If you have any questions, do not hesitate to go ahead and interrupt me, okay? The next panel talks about dividends. For approximately 30 years, we've been able to return dividends back to our members. As I noted, we're not here to keep money or, or profit from this organization, so any money we can return, when the actuaries give us the okay to do so, and we're financially sound to do so, we return that dividend, and the solid number shown here in the report on that end. The following panel talks about cyber claims, and the graph, I don't think you're going to be too surprised with that lower half of the graph. It shows a constant trend upwards on cyber claims. And the, the upper portion of this graph, just to give you some background, there was a huge spike in 2023 with the cyber losses that were paid out, and you can also see a downward swing, a pretty sharp swing on, on the, on the losses paid out, and we attribute that primarily to ransomware claims dropping off. And, and that is because our members are doing a really good job on trying to, again, nip it in the bud as far as trying to avoid these claims, a lot of the email filtering and just strengthening your security, and know before and similar type of training to train employees to avoid clicking on the wrong things. And if, if, if the county's doing, whether it be know before or other software, you may have been humbled yourselves, I know I have, with some of those trainings that you get, they're fantastic, and they really do make a difference. So, all of our members are doing a good job on that end of things. So, some positive news, even though there was a spike there, so. On the next page or panel, we're going to talk about work comp claims and some exciting things here, I would say. If you're not familiar with it, we have what we call a mod rate, which is a formula used to figure out what your work comp contributions are, will be for MCIT, and it figures in the costs, your experience, so your cost of, of claims for work comp, and it also figures in the amount of payroll and class codes that you have. So, it's custom fit to your set of employees and then the experiences that you have. Anything over 1.0, which is somewhat the mean or the average or the expected amount of claims, anything over 1.0 may present a opportunity for improvement. Anything 1.0 shows that you're doing better than average. If you look at your, your, your mod rate for 2025, you have .873. That's fantastic. It really shows that you're doing everything you can to keep your employees safe, and you have, you know, it's not something you can do just suddenly, and it's something at all levels, you have to actively try to keep your employees safe. It's not an easy thing, and you're doing a great job of it at a .873. Another interesting point is it actually shows dollars that you save by being under 1.0. It actually gives you the dollar amount that you saved in those efforts. The next panel is a, just an overall summary of the claims that we're experiencing, so you have some background on what the trust experiences for claims. And just to draw your attention to some of the bigger things that may stick out to you. Sheriff and jail, it shows a higher claims per year than a lot of the other departments. That's not necessarily a trend or negative trend, it's just what it is. It's a very dangerous job, 24/7 job. And so, just to give you some background on where that comes from. Auto, you see on the lower half for, for the property liability claims, the claims per year is a higher number, but the amount paid out per claim is a relatively low number in comparison. It's just part of what we absorb with unique set of vehicles that we have with the, with the entity losses. Law enforcement liability, it's a higher amount per claim. I don't know that that's necessarily going to shock everybody in today's environment that we're, that we're in. On the last section, this talks a little bit more about some of the other things that are included with your membership. Knowledgeable consultation, this is the risk management and loss control consultants. I work actively with our members and, and, and risk management considerations. We have loss control that helps out, a lot of building inspections and, and, and safety committee structure building. So, in the next window, you have resource-rich website. This is something I'm going to encourage you, if you haven't already looked at our website and ran into our, ran through our search engine, there is a plethora of information here that we've developed that, that you have at your fingertips to help you through your processes from, from the coverages standpoint, and there's something for every level. At your level, it may be open meeting law and remote law, you know, we've did a lot of updating on that. At other levels, it may be how to, you know, how to manage volunteers or what actually is involved on your property coverages, which can entail a lot of little details that are somewhat easier to forget if you don't do, work through them every week or, or what have you. So, there's a lot of information there that we encourage you to look at, so. Some of the other programs, you have the employee assistance program, which you, you obviously encourage your employees. You have a high usage rate. Your usage rates are 6.85 and 8.86 in, in the past couple of years, and anything over 4.0 shows a real high utilization. So, you're above that, and I congratulate you on, on just how successfully you've, you've encouraged your employees to use that service. Benchmark analytics for helping the sheriff's office to provide mitigation of losses, and workplace injury hotline to help, it helps to report and triage some of those mid-level claims where you're not sure where to, where to send somebody from a treatment standpoint. Minnesota Safety Council membership is included, a lot of information there for, for your safety questions. HSB boiler and pressure vessel inspections, we have the equipment breakdown coverage, which we, we handle through Hartford Steam Boiler, and Hartford also will do those pressure vessel inspections for the dangerous vessels that are required to be inspected per state, per state law. So, other things that we have, we have seminars, webinars, peace officer accredited training online speakers for onsite training, and defensive driving training through the Safety Council. So, again, with respect to time, I try to move through this quickly and be happy to talk about any questions you may have.
Sure. Well, thank you very much for that report. You guys always have a lot going on up there. I'll get to see your booth when we come up for the annual meeting, and I get, I represent the county on the MCIT board, so I get to the annual meeting during the AMC meeting. But any questions or comments from the board at this point?
We appreciate what you do. It makes a difference across the state of Minnesota, and we really appreciate what you do.
Thank you. 100% counties, right? Pardon me? We got 100% counties in MCIT, right?
No, no.
Nope.
We have 81 of the 87. Some of the bigger ones, I can list.
Selfish, sure. No, it's okay.
There's a lot of the agricultural societies, historical societies, SWCDs, rivershank, there's a whole slew of them, and some unique ones too. If you qualify for, as a public entity with statute 466, you can potentially cover with MCIT. So, there's about 400 beyond the counties. The biggest contingent is, is the counties, though. That's the most of what we do from a percentage and dollar standpoint. So, we do center our efforts there, and some, some of the efforts trickle down into them, but we do have meetings with them too, and, and with the other members, and are happy to develop more there too. But yes, it's a, it's kind of widespread.
Yeah, South Central EMS is part of this organization. So, it's one of those government groups that we have, so. All right.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments?
I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your efforts.
Drive back.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. At this time, the next item on the agenda is planning and zoning. Planning and zoning staff are here to present their action items. This is a public hearing. The public comments will be allowed in just a moment. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note, this meeting is being recorded, and there's a five-minute time limit. The county administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when you've used your allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. At this time, I'd like planning and zoning staff to please introduce themselves and give us the first item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John Considine, County Zoning Administrator. Our first item this morning is PC 16-25. It's a request for review and approval from Todd and Gwen Walters for an interim use permit to operate an upholstery business as a Level 1 home occupation. The property is zoned conservation and is in the shoreline of the Rapidan Reservoir. The site location is in part of the southwest quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 7, Rapidan Township, and the property address is 53941-188th Street. At the meeting, staff presented the report to the planning commission. The applicant was present and had no comment. There was no comment nor concerns from the planning commission, and following the discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings and conditions prepared by staff. And the board action for this item would be passage of a resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, John. At this time, I will call for public comment. If you'd like to make a comment regarding PC 1625, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on 16-25, please come to the podium. Last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 1625 for Todd and Gwen Walters, please come to the podium. See no public comment, I'll bring it back to the county board. Is there any questions or comments? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Move of approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none.
We all need more upholstery people because we don't have, we don't have, we don't have a lot of those around anymore. And appreciate you getting into the, getting into this. Thank you very much.
I'm always here for you.
Todd and Gwen have bought that property out there, and they've been working really hard just getting it cleaned up too, so we appreciate that too, because it was a dilapidated property, and they've done a nice job out there, and so this would be a good place for them.
I have that problem too.
All right. If there's no other discussion, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right. We'll move on to PC 1825.
PC 1825 is a request for review and approval by Thomas Stringy for an interim use permit to extend the season length and hours of operation of Tommy Gunn Paint Wars. The proposal will extend the season and hours of operation from April to September, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., to year round, 7:00 a.m. to midnight. The existing conditional use permit will, will be replaced with an interim use permit due to ordinance updates. Property is zoned agriculture and is in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 29, Cambria Township. The property address is 48306-235th Street. At the meeting, staff presented the report to the planning commission. The applicant was present and commented on support of the conditions of approval. There was no public comment and nor concerns expressed by the planning commission. And following discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings and conditions prepared by staff. And so, the board action this morning would be passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, John. At this time, if there's anyone wishing to comment on PC 1825, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 1825, please come to the podium. Last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 1825, please come, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. See no public comment, I'll close the public comment portion of this meeting, bring it back to the county board for action.
Move of approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to PC 1925.
PC 1925 is a request for review and approval by Tyler and Bethany Olson of the preliminary and final plat of Maplewood Court, a one-lot subdivision. The property is zoned rural residence and rural townsite and is in the urban French district of the city of Mankato. The proposal includes part of an outlet, Outlot 1 of the plat of South Bend, and part of the northeast quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 22, and part of the west half of the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 22, all in South Bend Township. The property address is 1344 Maplewood Drive. At the planning commission meeting, staff presented the report, and the applicant was present and had no comment. There was no public comment nor concerns expressed by the planning commission, and following the discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings and conditions prepared by staff. And so, the board action would be passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, John. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 1925? I will open up the public comment portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to comment on 1925, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 1925, please come to the podium. See no public comment, I'll bring it back to the county board for action.
Move of approval.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, John. 1725.
Our last item this morning is 1725, and it's a request for review and approval of an ordinance amendment to Section 24-325 Farm Winery of the Blue Earth County Code of Ordinances. The amendment updates standards for the operation of a farm winery and clarifies associated allowable uses. At the meeting, staff presented the report to the planning commission. There was no public comment, and the planning commission commented and discussed topics of wastewater and food
of wastewater and food preparation and there were no concerns expressed. Following the discussion, the planning commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff. And the board action would be passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission.
All right. Thank you, John. At this time, anyone wishing to comment on PC twenty-five, PC seventeen twenty-five, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on PC seventeen twenty-five, please come to the podium. Last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC seventeen twenty-five, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. See no public comment, I'll bring it back to the county board for action.
Move, I'm over it.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? I would just say that this is something that I actually was discussing with John and they did a great job doing the research on it and I think it's going to be a little, a very nice asset to our wineries out in the rural area and I've been talking with some of them, they're very excited about it, so thank you for moving it forward. Appreciate it.
It's great to hear.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
You as well.
All right. At this time, we are going to bring Craig back up here and we're going to talk about County Ditch Twenty-Five.
Good morning.
Good morning, Craig.
Okay. Quotes were collected from multiple contractors. This is in reference to County Ditch Twenty-Five ASI, ASI construction. Quotes were collected from multiple contractors for the proposed repair work involved in the installation of new alternative side intakes for portions of County Ditch Twenty-Five. These new water quality structures are being funded through a grant received from the SWCD funding. These new structures are also part of a larger repair plan affecting portions of County Ditch Twenty-Five. On Friday, August first, 2025, two quotes were received for the ASI installation work. The engineer estimated that the proposed ASIs is forty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars. The two submitted quotes provided in the table below with the lowest quote submitted from Sellers Construction LLC with a lump sum quote of twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. ISG and Blue Earth County have worked with Sellers Construction LLC on past projects with a similar scope of work with positive results. ISG recommends awarding the project to Sellers Construction LLC. We are asking the drainage authority for County Ditch Twenty-Five to award the bid to Sellers Construction LLC in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars for the installation of new grant-funded ASIs affecting portions of County Ditch Twenty-Five.
Thank you, Craig. Any questions or comments? Pretty straightforward, got a grant, have a motion to approve.
So.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the work to Sellers Construction. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Craig. Next item is CASA Five Interchange Grant Agreement. Ryan. Good morning.
Commissioners.
Morning, Ryan.
Good morning. Included in your packet this morning, thank you for offering me time in my off meeting, is a resolution of support for Minnesota Highway Freight Grant Program, grant application for the county stated Highway Five interchange with US Highway Fourteen. The resolution states, whereas Blue Earth County plans to reconstruct CASA Five from Cleveland Street to Summit Avenue, including the great separated interchange of CASA Five, Third Avenue and US Highway Fourteen in Mankato in 2030 to construct roundabouts at the ramps with US Highway Fourteen and whereas Blue Earth County will include this project in its forthcoming 2026 to 2030, transportation improvement plan, parentheses, pending anticipated approval soon, which identifies future projects and budgets for their completion and whereas the Minnesota Department of Transportation has given notice that the Minnesota Highway Freight Program funding is available with applications due September third, 2025 and whereas Blue Earth County plans to apply for the Minnesota Department of Transportation for a grant for the MHFP for funding in either 2029 or 2030. Now therefore be it resolved, the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners hereby approve the Blue Earth County application for Minnesota Highway Freight Grant Program, authorizes the county engineer to complete and sign the funding application, commits to providing the necessary matching funding identified in the application successfully complete the project, the proper county officers are authorized to execute a grant agreement and any agreements thereto with the Minnesota Department of Transportation concerning the above referenced grant. I see I do have a duplicating there, authorizes the county administrator or county engineer to sign the grant application on behalf of the county. So again, we are developing the Transportation Improvement Program grant, the 2026 to 2030 tip for our projects. And we do plan to include this project in 2030 as an illustrative project. This is an opportunity to get shot some external funding to assist with the project. In addition to that, in future solicitations of the local partnership program, which is what we used state dollars previously for the Riverfront Drive and US Highway Fourteen interchange, we will plan to apply for those also in the future. So we do need to put the proverbial cart in front of the horse a little bit here where we don't have it in our tip yet, but I do have that in kind of final draft version and do anticipate publishing it for public comment in the coming week or two and then hopefully bringing that to you, if not September, October for approval.
That's good. I move of approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Pretty straightforward. Got a motion. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Ryan.
All right, thank you. Can I just interject quickly, because I was anticipating getting asked this, but I was just on victory drive for our weekly construction meeting.
They already talked, they already talked about it, so we didn't have to ask you today, right?
We are, we're, we're really, really close, but obviously all the rain like I'm done is not helpful. So the contractor is working, they plan on working Saturday for sure. If they don't get the road open by Saturday, it'll be early next week. There's just a lot of subcontractors that have to come in at the last minute between seating and signs and pavement markings and finishing the topsoiling work and there's some sequencing that has to happen with one call locates and such. So they're, they're pushing hard to get it done, but any more rain is just going to really rail us. So if it's not open by...
We've had our share of rain.
Yeah. There was still standing water on site when I went through right before this meeting. If it's not open by Saturday, I would anticipate early the following week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, county stated sixty-nine, open house meeting four to six tonight.
That's right, yeah.
Thank you.
At your shop, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. Item number eight, human services. Phil, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Phil.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have a good news, bad news report. The good news is I want to, bad news is it's kind of a complex one. So there's a little story that goes with it and see if it makes sense when I'm done. It's regarding the human services fee policy in specific to our mental health center and you'll see in your packet a couple of kind of summary pages. And the first page has a bunch of rates with, you know, slashes in them and new rates in bold. There's a paragraph kind of describing what's happening, but I think I can probably go off that script or add to that script by simply saying this, that in a clinic, you need a standard rate. You have to have one. You can't have many. You have to have a base rate. And so we've always based our rate off of medical assistance, which is the lowest funder always. And medical assistance, assistance has rules that you can only bill their rate and that's it. You can't augment it, you can't, you know, have any spiffs on top of it. It is what it is. So we've used that as our base rate, which sets a low bar, if you can understand. There's two other components to this that we're asking for an adjustment on and that is that we move our rate up to the insurance rates, which is totally allowable. It's a way to maximize people that have insurance to get the full rate for their, their pay. It won't cost those individuals anymore. It's the insurance companies that will get paid at the full rate. So there's really no reason why I wouldn't strongly, you know, kind of recommend this to the board. And then there's a middle category called sliding fee, which gets a lot more complicated. So it's insurance, sliding fee, MA. We've based it on MA in the past. We're moving it all the way up to the top, which is the highest payment for insurance companies. We want to base our rates on that. In order to hold people harmless, we have to look at people that pay out of pocket and that's the sliding fee. And so we've, we're asking for permission to have a separate sliding fee for our mental health center, which is completely allowable, to hold them harmless as well. So I just want to be very clear that MA payers or MA recipients will not have a change. We're putting in a sliding fee, if you will approve it, so that the folks on sliding fee that are either their insurance doesn't cover mental health or they pay out of pocket, that it's based on their income. And so we've, we've lowered that standard so in other words, they pay less. And then we're fully maximizing insurance payments, which is allowable and it's just a good business practice is what I would say. So that's, that's the proposal and I'm sorry for the complexity. To be honest, when you get into sliding fee like, you know, payments on insurance companies where you have a high deductible or an HSA, there's all kinds of rules and we have to look, the billing staff are expert, they go in and look, do you qualify or don't you? So it's, it's very complex when you get into the sliding fee, but we feel we can do this without any negative impact on those people.
I heard you say the MA won't be affected neither. So they just, they'll just pay up to their rate?
Yes, and MA is the simplest commissioner because we cannot, we're not allowed to build anything but the MA rate. So that's like completely held harmless in this because we're not allowed to mess with that period. What we can do is set that as our standard rate and then that brings down what we charge insurance companies. So that's what's happened in the past, if that makes sense.
So you're setting the bar up here.
We're just setting the bar up here.
MA is going to be down here and that's still...
And they're not going to move. And sliding fee, we're making adjustments so they're held harmless and insurance we're maximizing is, is what the, the goal is.
Do you have an idea how much you'll...
That'll recover. I, I wish, I thought of this commissioner last night, is that I don't have a number on that. I think it's significant. I mean, you can see obviously that fees in some, some cases are tripled. So it's really how many of those we have. What you get into is payer mix and I can get the answer for you and I'll just send it to you if that's okay, Commissioner, just a ballpark figure. I think we do have that. When you look at how many, we call that payer mix. And so in our clinic, we cater, of course, to the MA population, the folks that don't have it. When you run a clinic, even a Mankato clinic, you really want a payer mix that doesn't emphasize MA because it pays so poorly. So we, that's our mission, is that we see people that a lot of folks don't want to see. And so we have an overall representation in MA. We have some sliding fee and we have some insurance and now because of the PMAP population that some of the MA folks can choose to be an insurance carrier, there's more of that. So I'll, I'll get you a number, but there's no doubt that we're still primarily an MA low, low-income kind of clinic. That's our identity and we serve serious and persistent mental illness, which also isn't real popular to serve in the community.
What happens if we don't approve it?
It, it just stays where it's at. We're just not maximizing revenues because we just feel like we are now, so.
So what this is doing is helping the county out.
Oh, definitely. Yeah, we're trying to maximize revenues because really, I mean, I think one of the triggers is the budget deficit, is this is a way to maximize a revenue that's out there that we haven't claimed. That's our goal.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's one dimensional, Commissioner, for sure.
Because I see, I mean, some of these are a three-hundred percent increase.
Right, right.
I mean, it's, it's a huge increase.
Yes.
So, I mean, but, but I'm just wondering. Thank you.
I'll give you another example too, just like, I think you'll see this, I think we bring the whole fee policy back in March usually, but like we didn't put the court ordered stuff if, if we, you know, Pat's office wants us to come and testify and wants to bring one of our psychiatrists. Those are kind of where they were and we'll probably bring those up to, to more market rates. So we have a little work left to do, but this is that first big jump. Really what I'm trying to say to your question, Commissioner, is that I think there's some of these categories that don't get used very often, back to Commissioner O'Connor's comments.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll definitely be positive, but we just don't know how much.
Yeah, and don't know how much, but I will send that to all the commissioners who we have, a ballpark figure.
Thank you.
This is all you have to do?
That's it for an action item. I have a couple of informational items after this.
I would move to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second for the human services fee policy. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of informational items that will, I think, look familiar to the board. And the first of those is adult foster care licensing, kind of a breakout of who we serve in this area. So it is developmental disabilities, physical disabilities, brain injury, chemical dependency and mental illness, along with the elderly population that can all live in adult foster care homes. There are two types of homes. One is fairly large, as you'll see, in corporate adult foster care and then one is quite small in family adult foster care. And just for working definition, family adult is when somebody opens really their own home up for people to live in their place that they occupy. So that, that you see is a total of twelve beds, maybe I'll start with that, total of twelve beds. We usually have the majority of it, but you see it's just not a large number. We have open beds as well and that's probably just about fit. When you do decide to license your home, you can choose who you take and who you don't. So sometimes there's lags and sometimes there's just not good fits in some of those. Moving back up on this slide, the one hundred and twenty-three corporate adult foster care homes represents four hundred and eight beds, if you add those all up. And you'll see the split out between our Eagle Lake, Lake Crystal, Mankato locations. Mankato obviously have the lion's share of the beds at this time. The next slide shows some trending and obviously the corporate, well, obviously by the trend line, you can see that we're growing year over year as far as our needs and our number of homes within Blue Earth County, which is the first graphic from nineteen through 2025. And then the second graphic, number of beds in those homes and you'll see ending at four oh eight, which is where we're at currently. The family foster care is a very small footprint and a generally declining picture. I, I think when you see the next slide, the regional perspective, you'll see we compare similarly to the region in that we have a lot of beds available corporately and, you know, relatively few on the adult foster care side. So, you know, both are important missions and passions that either a facility or an entity, an agency has in corporate and then a particular family has that they want to open their home up less, less often, but still an important mission when that fits for the individuals that live there. So that is adult foster care. I will move on to the final slide, which is adult protection. And you'll see that this past year, looking at 2024, our numbers, overall numbers of reports received was increasing along with the number of ports, reports accepted in. In the narrative or the bullets to the right, the third bullet is twenty-seven percent of the reports were screened in and that was a five percent increase from 2023. There is some pressure to err on the side, I'm from the state, to err on the side of screening folks in, so the charge is for us to, if we're on the fence, try to do more rather than less with these cases, which, which can be onerous. The very last bullet talks about complexity, which the deeper you get in, the more work there is to do, but we don't want to, again, come up short in trying to serve people, especially vulnerable people in this regard. Then the final graphic at the bottom, type of allegation is broken out. The self-neglect is historically the highest indicator of, of the report. And then the financial fiduciary or non-fiduciary, if the person that is being alleged to have financial expectation is in charge of the money or not in charge of the money, are those two categories. And then obviously you see the totals at the end. The false reports, you know, has criteria to it when we title it false, inconclusive, obviously a separate definition. And then there's times where there really just could be no determination and usually that's not because it's just gray, it's because there's just not enough information that's given that's objective that we can really pursue, so. So those are the informational pieces from staff and that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Questions or comments for Phil? That has to be a challenging process to go through the allegations because people's perspectives are different, first of all.
And, you know, we all see that when, you know... And, you know, we all see that when, you know, a neighbor, even just driving down the street, and you see something that just doesn't look right, and it probably, you know in your gut, it probably isn't right. But how you can objectively measure that and, and, you know, kind of prove that, so to speak, ultimately, when you accuse somebody of that, it's a very serious allegation, but, you know, there's always dysfunction in any family, and so to what degree is what you're kind of talking about, and I think that's a really important point, and very difficult, because there is gray in, in all of our protection work.
Yes. Very difficult for the staff to sort that out.
I agree.
All right. Well, Tom, keep up the good work. We appreciate your report.
I will do so. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a good afternoon.
You too.
Or day.
We're not there yet.
No, we're not.
We're pushing it.
Yes. See you later.
All right. We will move into administration. We want to take a quick break, or plow through administration. What are the wishes of the board?
I'm good.
All right, let's roll.
Go through.
Administration.
All right, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, first item is county board minutes from August 5th.
I'd move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the board minutes? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Next, are the bills for the two weeks indicated?
I'll move the bills.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the bills? Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Tab nine in your packet is the Human Resources Department agenda. Have a couple of action items for the board's consideration today. First is an authorization to initiate recruitment for two accounting coordinators in our finance department. These would be promotional opportunities as part of restructuring within the finance department, allowing us to ultimately have three accounting coordinators that could then be assigned to various county departments to assist with budgeting and financial management within those departments. So the plan would be to kind of pull back some of that accounting work that's currently in county departments, utilize these positions along with other finance positions to provide, really basically, more customer service through the finance department, two departments, so hopefully we produce a little better financial management and budgeting through this. So these would not be new positions, these would be promotional opportunities with no backfills.
All right. What are the wishes of the board?
Oh, I'll move it.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
For item B, I would turn to Human Resource Director Alva Bach to come and discuss that item with the board.
All right. Good morning, Laura.
Good morning.
All right.
Morning, Chair Brunder, Commissioners. I'm here today to request approval of several position grade adjustments as recommended by our classification and compensation study. And just as some background, in, beginning in 2024, we began a maintenance, ongoing maintenance program with our job descriptions, and so every year we review approximately one-third of our job descriptions. So this is our second year into that initial three-year period. We use, and then we send them to a consultant who uses a classification system to evaluate all of these positions. This process is essential, because it does ensure equitable and fair pay across the positions, it supports competitive and transparent salary structure, and it keeps the county in compliance with the Minnesota Pay Equity Act. Earlier this year, human resources staff worked with supervisors and department heads in order to review the job descriptions, and then sent them to our consultant for grade placement. As a result of that review, there were six positions that were identified for grade changes, the Information Security Administrator, IT Support Assistant and Network Administrator, all of information technology, and then, excuse me, Property Environmental Resources Specialist Three, Property and Land Specialist Three, and then the Taxation Coordinator, and they are all within property and environmental resources. You do have the full list of all of the positions that were reviewed and their grades. And so at this point, we're recommending approval of the adjustments as presented to ensure that our system remains equitable, competitive, and compliant. So I'd be open to questions.
Thank you, Laura. Any questions for Laura at this point? Want to entertain a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. There you go, Laura. Thank you, Laura.
Under informational items, then, we do have an increase of hours for a correctional officer that is part-time to a full-time position, and have initiated recruitment then to refill that part-time position. We've also filled correctional officer in our jail. We've initiated recruitment for the existing accounting coordinator that was vacant, so along with the two that were just approved, we'll be recruiting for three accounting coordinators. And then we had a resignation of an on-call library clerk. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have on any of those other human resource items.
Any questions? Move on.
Item number 10 in your packet, then, is a resolution in support of the Transforming Tomorrow Together, the 2040 Regional Plan. I think the board is aware that Greater Mankato Growth has been working with the community and public entities in the community on this Transforming Tomorrow Together plan, and so they have requested that the county board support that effort through the passage of the resolution that's included in the packet. So brought it forward today for the board's consideration. My understanding, many local communities have already supported this resolution or in the process, just like we are.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
I would move to approve.
Second.
You got a motion and a second for the Transforming Tomorrow Together Regional Plan? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 11 in your packet is a First Amendment to a subdivision agreement. This goes back to 2007, when the Justice Center was built. At that time, the county, along with Mr. Wolf, agreed to a subdivider agreement that would commit the county to paying for half of the extension of Bassett Drive. When the Justice Center was built, we participated in the cost of building Carver Road out to our facility. Bassett Road terminated at Carver Road at that time, but a commitment was made to financially participate in the building of Bassett Road. Well, the BCA has purchased that property from Mr. Wolf, north of the Justice Center, and so they're proceeding with a building plan. So they will also participate in the cost of that Bassett Drive extension. This document that I've included in the packet is not going to be the final version. We've been in kind of a scramble, as we've been negotiating some pieces to this agreement. We've reached agreement on the financial aspect, and so I believe it's the last page of this particular item in the packet, has the cost breakdown. We have some language issues that the county attorney's office has been helping me with. I just got the final language that we'd like to propose for one of the provisions this morning, so I'll be bringing that to the BCA in the city of Mankato. So my request today is authorization from the board for approval to allow me to sign this agreement when we have the final agreement in place, which should be later today, quite frankly.
Sure.
So my primary provisions of the draft agreement you have are unchanged, it's kind of a fine tuning that we're working on. The BCA is really anxious to get this signed, because they want to build Bassett Road yet this fall.
Oh, they do? So there is time restraints.
Yeah. We're under a time crunch. We're a couple of weeks behind their desired timeframe.
I would move to approve.
Yeah. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to allow the administrator to sign this agreement with the city of Mankato. I'm very comfortable with that. I, I don't have a problem with it. We got the, most of it worked out, so I would like to see the project move forward. This will be a nice asset to the community, so I know where you are paying, between the state and us, we're paying this whole development of this road, basically, but I think it'll be a good asset.
I can tell you that the bids for the construction came in quite a bit under the engineer's estimate, so that's positive that the ultimate cost to the county is less than we anticipated.
Good.
Less is good.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 12 in your packet is a memo regarding a request for a tobacco license. Dollar General Store in Mapleton has applied and submitted the required paperwork and license fee. The license would be effective August 19th through the end of this year if approved, and so staff are recommending approval.
I'll move it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the tobacco license. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 13 in your packet is some All Seasons Arena change orders. We are getting to the end of that project. You may have seen some media coverage recently. I think they are planning kind of a groundbreaking or ribbon cutting middle of September, maybe September 19th, if I remember right, so keep that date available. But in terms of these change orders, we have three of them here. First one is with Metcon for $316.83 for the installation of some flooring and some painting changes, small items overall. Then the second one is a Malteer Mechanical, change order of $500 for the removal of a floor drain. And the third one is Laketown Electric. This is a larger one at $11,020 for some lighting changes to meet building code, as well as adding some emergency lighting. And so this has been approved by the All Seasons Arena Joint Powers Board and recommending approval here today, leaving our contingency still at a little over $100,000.
I'll move the changes.
Okay, Mark moves it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Getting close.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I happened to drive by the facility yesterday, and they have painted it, so it does look different from the exterior as well as the interior now.
Good.
Item number 14 in your packet, then, is a resolution declaring a state of emergency. As you heard at the last meeting, we've had some public damage on the Red Jacket Trail. That did kind of kick off some effort with our emergency manager in terms of looking at public damages around the county. And so last week, the chair did sign a declaration to get the process going. That needs to be ratified by the full board here today. We are above the state threshold for Blue Earth County in terms of damages. We probably will not achieve a federal declaration based on the amount of damages.
I'll move.
Got a motion and a second for the declaration discussion? If we do get to the threshold for the federal, would this work for that, or do we got to pass another one then?
I would have to check with the emergency manager. I think this would cover both, but.
Sounds like we're not, we're quite a ways away, so.
Yeah. That's a very high threshold.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions or comments? I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 15, then, is the second quarter donations for the board's acceptance. Starting with the monetary donations, we had a number of donations to various library activities, especially this summer learning program. We'll point out that, again, the Glenn Taylor Foundation provided a substantial contribution to our summer learning program. We also received some donations to our veterans program and the Adult Mental Health Initiative. So total monetary donations were $18,715.98. And we also have received some in-kind donations, mostly at the library, as well as time volunteered at the library. And so bringing this report forward, as we usually do, looking for the board's acceptance of those donations.
I'll move to accept.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second to accept the donations? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 16 in your packet is the financial status report for July 31st of this year. We're about 58.5% through our fiscal year. You'll see our total revenues sit at 86.2 million, with expenditures at just under 94 million, so we are in a deficit status at this point in time, which is to be expected with our building project. Going back to the top of the report, our state and federal money, our revenues sit at 35.5 million against a $41 million budget, so our percentage is high there. A lot of that is a result of receiving some of our CASA funding in July that would finish out the year, so we have drawn down a lot of that highway money. Our transportation sales tax is pretty much on budget. It had been lagging a little bit, but it has recovered a little bit in the last couple of months, so that's good to see. On the expenditure side, we are running a little heavy in our public aid assistance. Personal services is a little bit above the budget target, but that's timing of a third payroll a couple of times a year. We're getting to the end of the construction period, and so we'll see our contracts and fees line continue to go up in the next few months as those project bills start to arrive. The building and equipment purchases, you'll see, are set at a little over 25 million, and that's showing the progress of our Public Works Building as that moves forward and still is on schedule to be completed sometime in November. Terms of the enterprise fund, you'll see our total revenue is there for the landfill are 3.3 million. Expenditures sit at 2.1 million. Again, that surplus is a result of not having any cell development or too many major equipment investments, so we're in good shape there. The second page of the report shows our cash and investment balances. You'll see it towards the top, our total available funds sit at 89.4 million. Our six-month operating needs sit at just over 74 million. Our total available funds, then, are 133.8 million, and so we continue to sit in good financial state here in Blue Earth County. Be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
All right. Any questions for Bob on the financials? Hearing none, we'll move down to item number 10. Our MICHA group is here. Nathan, welcome to y'all. We only have three chairs up here. I don't know if you want to just switch your staff up, or you want us to try to?
I think let's just switch staff up, and we'll just kind of go up and.
Perfect.
Do you have just something for me to navigate?
I control. If you want to just tell me to advance the slide.
Sure.
You take the center seat. Good morning, Nathan.
Good morning, Chair. Members of the board, my name's Nathan Jesson. I'm the executive director of the Minnesota Intercom Key Association. Can you just go to the next slide here? So the first slide we have is just kind of a description of who we are and the work we do. MICHA is a voluntary organization that represents 17 counties across the state. We work on public policy issues at the Capitol that aren't maybe county-specific, but those types of issues that are going to affect counties across the state. So our team will kind of be walking through a number of the issues that we worked on, the legislative outcomes that we saw. the legislative outcomes that we saw at the end of the session in 2025. And so what do we do? We provide weekly reports from the Capitol, an end-of-session report. We brief our board, which meets monthly, on going on at the capitals as well as during interim. We also run policy committees that are made up of county staff and different, separated by issue area, as well as meet with our county administrator team on a monthly basis as well. And we do try to provide more analytical work, especially around whether it's a property tax levy, state budget forecasts, things of that nature. So you'll see some of that reflected in the presentation as well today. But generally, one thing I always emphasize and that our team always emphasizes is that we're at our most effective at the Capitol, not when it's just us, but we're relaying your stories, what you're experiencing, what you're hearing and seeing on the ground, because that's really what will connect with legislators, right? Rather than just kind of us talking about a high level, but when we can relate it to you. I did want to just like, speaking of analytical, provide kind of a picture of the net tax capacity picture in Blue Earth County compared to the state. This is showing both the statewide average in '20 and '25 as well as Blue Earth County in '25. And what you can see here is that, well, first of all, this is kind of essentially net tax capacity, so what Blue Earth is taxing with its tax levy. And what you can see is that the trend is kind of, Blue Earth County is following the statewide trend over the last five years, an increase in residential value as a percentage of the overall pie and a decrease in commercial and industrial value. Again, not overall decrease, not as dollar decrease, but just as a percentage of the overall picture. Did want to talk about the tax bill a little bit that passed this year. Some of the most notable elements are the elimination of the dedication to counties from the gross receipts tax for the cannabis gross receipts tax. Now, when the legislature decided to legalize cannabis in 2023, they set aside 20% of all the gross receipts taxes, half going to counties, half going to cities. This year, we're unable to, with the budget deficit picture of a $6 billion structural deficit in the outbiennium, unable to retain that revenue moving forward. I would say that one of the things that made it difficult is that unlike county program aid or other aids to counties, this money wasn't really coming in yet. Each county got a $2,000 payment last September. So that was a challenge that we were running up against. But we were able to hold CPA stable despite a $20 million cut being proposed in the Senate at one point. And then some other minor aids like payment move taxation was held constant. A quality invasive species aid was cut in half in the number. The impact on that's reflected here. That's not going to affect your county budget next year. It'll, the aid reduction will be first experienced in 2027. The only other thing I would note is I've got Blue Earth County, county program aid totals up here. It is a slight reduction next year compared to 2025. That's really on the tax base equalization side of the formula. So your need aid is actually going up, and need aid is measured by things like percentage of population, 65 or over, or the share of your households receiving SNAP or Group A offenses. But relative to the rest of the state, your tax base, your tax base, your net tax capacity is doing a little bit better. So you can go to the next slide. Mrs., I'll turn it over to Amber from our team to talk about transportation funding.
Great. Good morning, Mr. Chair and fellow commissioners. My name's Amber Backus with United Strategies, the transportation liaison for MICA, and this is my first year representing you at the Capitol. I've had a lot of experience in transportation at the Capitol over the years, but needed to get up to speed on your issues. I really appreciate the involvement of Ryan Tilges. He was a great resource to me as I worked through the session on your behalf. The transportation bill was one of those ones that had a lot of difficulty getting across the finish line. You had the co-chairs in the House who didn't get along that well. So they had trouble getting their own bill together in the House before they even were matched up against the Senate. Those negotiations between the Senate and the House didn't go so well, so the bill was ultimately kicked up through leadership to figure out. So the Senate Finance Chair, John Marty, and the Ways and Means Chairs in the House, Paul Torvalson and Zach Stevenson, ended up negotiating the final bill. Beyond issues with personalities, they had a big challenge in terms of making cuts to the general fund. They had a very big target. They had to cut $115 million in the next biennium and $133 million after that, and that's over one-third of their general fund expenses in the transportation area, which made it very tough to get to agreement. Ultimately, the bulk of the cuts were to Metro Transit, Greater Minnesota Transit, and Active Transportation. But trunk highways also did take a cut in the sense that the dedication of the sales tax on motor vehicle parts, which was enacted in 2023 to phase in and be dedicated from the general fund to the trunk highway fund, that dedication has been slowed down. So that is resulting in a reduction of $83 million from the sales tax on auto parts in the outbiennium. Fortunately, the legislature was able to offset that impact to the trunk highway fund by increasing the surcharge on electric vehicles. It's currently $75, but they increased it on a sliding scale to as much as $200, which should raise significant revenue if the changes in federal policies about rebates don't impact the EV market. So hopefully, the cuts to the HUTD fund will only be $18,3 million over the next four years, which means in the outbiennium, that's an $8.6 million cut to the CASA fund, which is the state's portion for county state aid highways. The one bright spot we had was there was some new money provided in the bill, general fund money to the local government road wetland replacement program. That is a program administered by Bowser to take care of the impacts to wetlands when you are reconstructing county roads. There was $3 million provided to that agency in the transportation bill, so that was a positive for us. And the one other thing I wanted to mention that I didn't include in this slide, but there was also some language for your licensing centers so that no fee transactions can get a small reimbursement. So if somebody comes with a change of address for a vehicle registration, you can get some money to recoup that as well as some of the more substantive transactions for disabled American veterans who don't have to pay any fees right now. You can get some reimbursement there. And then thank you to the next slide for the things that didn't happen in the transportation bill. The first one on the list was something we had wanted to see. If you recall, last biennium, the legislature enacted a new program to require that state highways that are adding capacity or building new interchanges, that the greenhouse gas and vehicle miles traveled be tallied and then offset. When that was passed, there was no funding allocated for that, and there's still a lot of questions about how this program will be implemented. We were hoping to see a delay in the implementation of the bill, just so things can get figured out and it can be done properly. That did not make it through the process due to opposition from predominantly the Senate and major environment and transit groups. The other provisions that were dropped from the bill, we were glad to see not included in the end. Some of them made it harder for the counties to do their jobs when it comes to constructing roads and added more obstacles. One thing being changes to the state aid design standards, where a very metro focus was being pursued in terms of what design of your county roads would look like. Expanding the definition of trunk highway funds. As I said, the trunk highway fund now is just that. It funds roads and bridges. The Senate had language to expand the uses of that money to transit and active transportation and greenhouse gas mitigation. And when there's already not enough funds to sort of dilute what's available for roads and bridges, caused a lot of heartache. That did not make it in the final bill. The legislature also had a couple provisions in the Senate side to actually mandate speed limits on county roads, which again was a concern in terms of taking that local control away from county government and the expertise of your engineering staff. And then lastly, there was also language in the Senate bill to create a new program to help pay businesses for interruptions caused by highway construction projects, which is a great cause. The problem is that it was probably going to be funded through, again, MnDOT and the projects themselves. And again, when there's limited resources, nobody was interested in seeing those monies go for something besides transportation infrastructure. So I will pause there quickly and just see if you have any questions on the transportation portions before I do a quick recap of the bonding. Great. And then otherwise, we were very happy to see that a bonding bill did get done this session. No one was sure if that was going to happen. Neither the House nor Senate had put forward a bonding bill during the regular session. It wasn't until the announcement of the special session that we saw that a bonding bill would in fact get done. The Senate Republicans came on board to help pass a bill. And as you recall, it takes three-fifths of the majority, three-fifths vote in each body to pass a bonding bill. So you need Senate Republicans and Democrats to work together. So the Senate Republicans agreed to do one if there was more money for infrastructure. And that was a boon for us, as the amount of monies for some of the programs that MICA cares about greatly were part of that. So $42 million for the local road improvement program, $20 million for local bridges, and then another $5 million for the local government road wetland replacement program. Those numbers are much higher than anything we had anticipated going into the session. And I do just want to mention, yesterday, there was a working group convened on the wetland replacement program, and they talked about what they're going to do with this $8 million. And Wetland Bank Area 9, which Blue Earth County is in, is one of the focuses and is going to get a significant amount of credit to deal with issues in the Minnesota River Basin, so good news for you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Amber at this point? Thank you, Amber.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Nancy Zaleski and I do both Public Health and Human Services for MICA. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. Going into the session this year, all three organizations, AMC, MICA, AMC, and Maxa, all had the three top priorities in relation to the human services budget. And I'm happy to say that we made progress on all three. The first one you've been hearing about forever, the SSIS, Systems Modernization. They did include $35 million in the Health and Human Services bill, so we're happy to see that. Along with the $10 million that was set aside last year, there's $45 million now that will allow us to draw down some federal funding for that. Wanted to mention that. That was a, that was a big deal. Hopefully, we can say goodbye to the green screen technology that everyone's been wrestling with for a long time. The second item is we had a Min Choices Reform Bill that we brought forward, and several, several of those components were passed. For those folks who have a condition that's not likely to change at all from year to year, we now can do those reassessments every three years. Before that, it was, had to be done every, every year, and it took a lot of time and aggravation for the client as well as county staff. So we're happy to see that that, again, is, every three years, the client, however, can request a full reassessment at any time. The other thing is that they're allowing more remote reassessments. It used to be where you could have two consecutive reassessments done in a remote fashion. Now we can do it four times. Verbal attestation is replacing the required reassessment when signatures for service initiation. However, when, when the assessment is completed or the reassessment is completed, then an email has to go out to the client asking for a written attestation from the client within 30 days. They modified the assessor qualifications. You now only have to have a two-year degree to be able to perform these assessments. And then counties do have to begin the assessment, including an estimated timeline as to when it will be completed within, within 20 days of the client's request to do so. Finally, DHS will have a dashboard on its website that, that addresses assessment completions. The third item is another one you're all familiar with. It deals with priority admissions and direct care and treatment. Several years ago, there was a group that was put together. Angie Youngberg from Blue Earth County sits on that group along with Commissioner Cheryl Clark from Stearns County in terms of MICA representation. They were looking at the problem related to the 48-hour rule where people that are housed in jails have to kind of bump to the top and moved into the Inoka Metropolitan Regional Treatment Center. There, this year, they paused that two years ago, the 48-hour rule, that those folks were bumped up waiting for the results of this, this panel that was working on, on these, on this issue. They did extend that again another two years right now. That was a recommendation that came out of the panel, but it was also conditioned on capacity being addressed in, by the legislature this year. And I'm happy to say that they did put $20 million in the Human Services Finance Bill for capacity as well as $34 million for building operating expenses starting in 2029. And then, of course, the most important thing was we got $55 million in the bonding bill. So with that, this bed, or the AMRTC will be expanded by 50 beds. So very happy to see that moving as well. Other things is there's a report that's due February 1st of 2026 of this review, a priority missions review panel. And then I did want to mention one thing that did not happen that we did advocate for. You'll recall that we've had a two-year reprieve for those folks that have been deemed mentally ill and dangerous and are waiting a bed. They're in one state-operated facility waiting for a bed in another AMRTC, as an example, to St. Peter. We received a two-year reprieve two years ago, which now sunsetted on July 1st. And we are going to be picking that expense back up, which is estimated to be about $14 million in the first biennium and $18 in the second. And the other thing I just want to remind everyone of is that community resources still need to be addressed. There's still a shortage of beds, as you're all aware. The next item is cost shifts, and there's a slide, the next slide kind of illustrates where each body started, the House, Senate, Governor, and then the conference committee is the gold on the right-hand side. And I just want to say that we were on heavy defense and want to thank all county commissioners and staff for weighing in on this, because as you can see, if you look at those totals on the bottom of this chart, we were facing some fairly really significant cost shifts. We were able to temper that dramatically. You can see on the, on the right-hand side, $36 million in the first biennium and then 61 in the second. I want to point out, under disability waivers in the gold column there, there's a negative number of $89,524,000. At one time, there was a proposal that counties pick up a cost share for residential costs related to disability waivers. In the end, they dropped that, but it's contingent on a work group that is charged with finding $89 million in savings in the Health and Human Services Bill. That is for fiscal year 2028, 2029. That work group is, I should mention that MICA has two appointees, AMC has two, and Maxa has two, and we're in the process right now of identifying who, who those voices should be. We're wanting to make sure that there's good representation, you know, both geographically, size of county, et cetera. So if that doesn't happen, we will be revisiting this again, that $89 million. I wanted to point that out. You can see the $18 million in the second biennium. That's related to the MIND cost share that we did pick up again. And I do want to skip down to the flat reimbursement for long-term care assessments, that $18 million in 2028, 29. DHS is charged with coming up with a methodology for reimbursing us for, for Min Choices assessments. Right now, we're reimbursed by the random time moment, random time moment study. And so Senator Abler has been a proponent of looking at flat fees for a long time, estimated to save, or to save the state $18 million. So more to come on that as well. The other bill was the Health and Human Services Bill. Just a few highlights there. Mentioned SSIS was, was funded there. They also put money into EMS, ambulance services that have been in particular crisis in Greater Minnesota, the rural parts of the state. They put $16 million into an ambulance operating deficit grant program, $2 million into training and staffing grants. And then money from both the general fund as well as the Healthcare Access Fund. They're creating a rural EMS uncompensated care pool. So that was fairly significant investment this last year, given the state of the budget. Terms of public health, they put $2.6 million each biennium into infectious disease prevention. Another thing I want to mention is last year, the legislature cut $7.2 million for the biennium from local and tribal public health grants for cannabis-related prevention. They partially recovered that this year or funded that this year at $5 million for the biennium. So it's not completely whole, but we did pick up $5 million of the $7.2 million. Other reductions in public health, they reduced funding for emergency preparedness grants and funding for the public health infrastructure pilot projects. And finally, there were a myriad of MDHB increases that were included in the bill as well. Another thing I want to mention that was, they've captured savings on is you recall non-emergency medical transportation? The state used to run that, and about 12 years ago, I want to say, the counties were gifted that in the middle of the night during conference committee. And we've been wrestling with that since and have, of course, developed our own system since. The state, the governor had it in his proposal, and the legislature agreed that the state's going to take that back over. That, they're estimating is going to save the state $48 million in the first biennium and $104 in the second, so that is going back to the state. And then a couple of other things I would mention, that the $21 million for the public option that was repealed, those dollars are being returned to the Healthcare Access Fund. And then the elimination of Minnesota Care for Undocumented Adults, $56 million savings in the first biennium and about $91 million in the second. What didn't happen and what are we faced with in 2026? There were no changes made, or very minor changes made to the Minnesota African-American family... Family Preservation Act. We are very concerned, counties are very concerned about our ability to have this up and running by January of 2027. There is a current pilot project that's being done with Hennepin and Ramsey Counties right now. They appointed this work group that started their work probably right around June 1st, something like that. We do have a number of county commissioners on it. The MICA members are Otter Tail County Kurt Mortensen and Washington County Carla Bigum, and they serve with Hennepin County Angela Conley and Joan Lee from Polk County. That work group is to have an interim report by January 1st of 2026. When we made our pitch to certain legislators this year about we're not going to be ready on January 1st, 2027, they basically said, let's see what the work group comes up with because we'll have next year then to make tweaks as necessary. Yesterday's meeting, which I attended remotely, they talked about a draft report that's going to be started, they're going to start doing the round robin with that on September 1st, and I can't tell you what's going to be in it because the meetings that I've sat in on, it's slow. It's very slow in terms of what we need. One of the things that I believe of a recommendation that will come out of the group is that the state does the review, the case review on these, which is something that we were advocating at the legislature for. So more to come on that. Also, there was language that emerged as an amendment to the Health and Human Services Bill that would have prevented counties from contracting for case management services. This is something that we're very concerned about because counties contract for case management services, and so we were able to pause it, but I do expect that we're going to see that come forward or at least have a conversation about that again. And finally, the Senate Judiciary Chair had language that would have established a civil commitment coordinating division within the Office of the Attorney General. This is something that we argued was already duplicative. There were other folks that said that the departments are already doing a lot of this work, and in the end, that was dropped. And then finally, the provider tax, which is currently at 1.8%. There was a proposal to increase it to the cap of 2%. That did not happen either. With that, I want to call out your staff. You all know I work very closely with Phil Claussen and Angie Youngerberg and Erica Sletton, and I just want to let you know that they're so valuable to not only MICA but to counties statewide, and we thank you for allowing them to participate as much as they do because they're invaluable.
Thank you, Nancy, for that report. Any questions for Nancy? Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Rachel Sismojek. I am MICA's environmental liaison at the Capitol. Great to be here. So I first just want to provide kind of a broader overview of some of our progress in 2025. MICA's environment priorities span a number of different committee jurisdictions, so we're monitoring activity in the Environment Committee, of course, energy, agriculture, legacy, taxes. And so there's a lot of different kind of moving parts there. And so before we get into kind of the specific bill breakdown, just want to give this high level overview. So, you know, when it comes to our environment agenda, solid waste and trying to secure additional resources for counties to do their solid waste management activities is really at the top of the list and a major priority. But when it comes to, again, kind of the different committees that we're in, there was not a lot of funding to be had this year. You've heard from other folks already about the significant cut targets that a lot of committees had. You know, in the Environment Committee, you know, it was about, you know, a very small cut, just a few million dollars. But taxes, for example, or the conversation around SCORE, the solid waste management tax revenue and how that is allocated to counties plays out in taxes, whereas Nathan said earlier, you know, they had to find a lot of money to cut. And so that makes it harder for us to see really any significant progress on that issue. You know, legacy is an exception to that. The Legacy Committee and specifically the Clean Water Funding, when it comes to addressing nitrate contamination, PFAS contamination of groundwater, you know, other clean water issues, having that dedicated Clean Water Fund is really critical. There's over 300 million in appropriations that'll go out over the next biennium for activities, programs that help with kind of the testing and mitigation of that type of contamination. And so grateful to see that that funding was allocated, and that was really, you know, the Clean Water Council's recommendations pretty much copied and pasted into that legislation. And MICA has two board members who serve on the Clean Water Council, so we're well-represented there and feel good about the final Legacy Bill. Nathan already touched on the 50% reduction in Aquatic Invasive Species Aid. I know that's not, you know, a huge, huge number for your county, but it's still, right, like almost $60,000, and so I want to acknowledge that that will be, you know, there'll be some impact for you all. You know, in the kind of solid waste space, we spend a lot of time not only advocating for more resources for counties for solid waste management, but also, you know, what are some more proactive kind of upstream measures to try to reduce the amount of waste coming into the waste stream and the costs that counties face for dealing with that. So in 2024, we worked with, you know, other county partners, you know, some environmental groups, other local government partners to advance the Packaging Waste and Cost Reduction Act. So that establishes extended producer responsibility, so bringing the producers of packaging and paper products kind of into the fold and having them be responsible for some of the costs of managing, managing all that waste that makes up a significant amount of the waste coming in and wanting to see a little bit more work on their part for trying to, you know, make more of these products recyclable and keeping those out of landfills and things like that. So we're really excited about the passage of that in 2024, and so now we're kind of in the implementation phase. The advisory board has been established. They've met a few times already this year and so encouraged by some of the early progress, but it'll take a few years before that's really in full effect, and counties are seeing the cost reductions there. We have now tried to, again, working with the MPC and other county partners, tried to advance legislation to kind of extend this type of a model, this product stewardship model, to other product categories, primarily batteries and electronics waste. That was the big push this past session. I think because we just had this really landmark legislation in 2024 around paper and packaging, I think for a lot of legislators, they're pretty hesitant around trying to do more of this before we see the positive impact of what has already been passed. But we'll continue the conversation. There have been stakeholder meetings happening already this summer to try to revise that legislation because it ultimately did not pass this session, and so I think a lot of good conversation, good work still to be done there, and I know that that's going to continue to be an area of focus for us just because those are products that are very expensive for counties to deal with. They have a lot of risks, safety risks for the folks who are doing that work, and so still, you know, a place where there's some good work to be done. Data centers ended up being a really strong point of contention. I don't think a lot of folks would have expected that a year ago, going into 2025, but here we are. A lot of that played out in the Tax Committee, but there were some environmental groups who had major concerns around really the water usage required for some of these products or projects. MICA does not have an official position on data centers, just based on kind of the conversations we had throughout session. I don't know that we will, but I think it's still helpful to just report out. So we'll get to some of the specifics on kind of where they landed on data centers. And then finally, just another piece that's pretty high on our agenda in terms of priority is just how we deal with wood waste and especially Emerald Ashboro. I think you all have seen that a little bit sooner than some of the more northern counties in Minnesota, but that's continuing to be kind of a pain point for counties. So lots of good discussion, and everyone kind of acknowledges this is a problem, but again, when there's not a lot of money, there's just not a whole lot that they can really do about it. So the next slide, thank you. So again, just trying to get into a little bit more of the specifics of some of the different bills that we tracked. So the Legacy Bill, I already talked about the funding for the Clean Water Fund, so you can just see kind of the breakdown by how that will go out in the next two years. We mentioned the e-waste battery product stewardship legislation did not pass. We were kind of on defense with that packaging bill and will continue to be. I think there are a lot of industry groups who would like to see that rolled back or just repealed entirely in their ideal world, and counties are really a strong voice on solid waste issues, and so our advocacy and our defense on this topic is really critical. I was in a number of committees where, you know, when counties would go up to testify or had submitted, you know, written testimony on solid waste topics, you know, across the board, that's really valued by legislators, and they'll say that, you know, very clearly, and so we'll definitely continue to focus on this. There were a couple of fee increases, so an increase to watercraft surcharges to help fund state aquatic invasive species management activities and also water permits and usage fees, and that will be, again, for state activities around groundwater protection. So just wanted to highlight those, even though that is money that's going to the state, not necessarily distributed to counties. And then finally, there was an increase. So first, they were able to extend the statutory language around transferring money out of the Closed Landfill Investment Fund that was set to expire in 2025, so this summer. They extended that another four years to 2029, and then also increased the amount of money that can be taken out of that from four and a half million to six and a half million, just to acknowledge the increased costs of maintaining closed landfills. So we did, you know, I mentioned SCORE earlier, that I can almost guarantee will continue to be a big conversation point for MICA and counties in general. There's currently $32 or $33 million, you know, depending on the year, in solid waste management tax revenue that just gets put into the General Fund rather than into the Environmental Fund to be distributed to counties for their SCORE activities. This is an area of bipartisan support. Our House SCORE Bill had 35 authors, pretty much every member, Republican and Democrat of the House Environment and Taxes Committee. Everyone agrees in theory that this is what should happen, but is another place where a lack of resources, and especially in that Tax Committee, that makes it really hard. But we'll keep having the conversation and try to chip away at SCORE in future years. And then the data centers bill, so again, really just focused on the provisions related to water usage and just some of the new requirements for folks who are applying for major water usage projects. So just a pre-application evaluation, some of the permit conditions, just to ensure that public safety, health, and welfare are protected for the communities where these projects will be based, just to ensure that water conservation and efficient use are at least considered as part of that permit application, and if needed, if there's concern around the impact to the aquifer, that the applicant will have to pay to conduct that test. And that is it. Unless folks have questions.
Any questions for Rachel?
Not going on.
Not going on.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
And you're right about the discussion about the centers. I mean, we've had some of them at MICA and a lot of concerns and just a lot of stuff going on with that.
Absolutely.
North Main Kido's got a big issue with data center going on right now. So, big news.
Thank you, Rachel.
All right. Well, thank you, Chair, members of the board. My name is Emilio Lamba. I am the Public Safety and Corrections Policy Analyst for the Association of Minnesota Counties, but I do help out as an informational resource for MICA on those issues. So I'll be giving the wrap-up for what happened this year for corrections and public safety. It was really a less consequential year in terms of the full picture, looking at the proposed cost shifts and budget cuts that every other area was facing. Public Safety and Corrections actually did receive a substantial positive target. However, that funding was preset aside for our state agencies, Department of Public Safety, as well as Department of Corrections, to help address their operating deficiency requests as well as just their standard operating adjustments. The most substantial being the Department of Corrections. They had stated that that was from labor contract settlements. They had the session prior that were not fully funded, and as they finally did get up to full complement for staffing, there was a large gap that persisted. Initially, the legislature was only going to fund about one-third of their requests that went through the governor's budget. That was very challenging for them, and jumping down to the bottom of the slide there, I'll just call out that was essentially what spelled the closure of the Stillwater Prison to help ensure in the out-years they were able to maintain some savings to offset what the legislature was unable to allocate them. So it kind of created the perfect storm for a facility that I think we all know had, you know, significant amount of money in deferred maintenance sitting there to close quite abruptly. There is a decommissioning study that will occur over the course of the next two years, and at the halfway point will determine how the facility will be managed and used going forward after its closure. Looking past that, the Community Corrections Funding Formula for community supervision and probation and parole across the state was one that a lot of county associations pushed. MICA, one of MICA's largest priorities was getting that fully funded. However, amidst the challenging budget situation, it was quickly noted that it was probably would be better utilized to pivot to help sustain and stabilize the formula. So there was a push to insert a three-year averaging. Currently, right now, we anticipate probation or supervision numbers across the state to trend down from 2022 to 2023. We already saw those numbers decrease at an amount that would have been $6 million less in the total funding formula. And so if those trends continue as a result of changes at the legislature, such as the five-year probation cap, along with other things, this will at least allow us to have a bit of a smoothing factor in the formula so they're not as steep of drops until we're able to get fully funded. It also allows us to incorporate our 2021 and 2022 numbers, which were substantially higher, so it does help lift that up a little bit for the time being. For the next bit, the supervision fees, I do just first off want to call out your guys' Community Corrections Director, Don Mars Select, as well as your Deputy County Administrator, Josh Mile. They've been some of our best active voices in ensuring that counties are able to retain the tools necessary in their toolbox to be able to draw resourcing into the counties despite the legislature actively at times trying to remove those tools. They have been fantastic in ensuring that across many county associations and working groups that those things are maintained. So as part of that, we were able to extend the collection of supervision fees through 2029, previously set to sunset in 2027. This was a nod from the legislature acknowledging that while they are unable to fully fund us because of the current state budget, that they do want to allow counties to have some alleviation of their shortfall. Next, there was a proposal from the governor's budget as well as Department of Corrections to expand the cost of the Interstate Compact Unit to all 87 counties. A little context to that, previously, the funding for that unit that manages and oversees the transferring of individuals on supervision in between states was funded strictly out of the subsidies of DOC contract counties. This proposal from the state was to create a more equitable format to fund that. We, as counties across the state, agree that it's likely not ideal for our counties to be paying for something that we have no oversight on. It is a state function. Many county groups have already engaged in working with Department of Corrections and the state as how we can best fund that better in the future. Next, there was the sentencing to service funding that was removed from the state. Many of you are aware, it used to be a 50-50 split. About a decade ago, went to 75-25, and now the state has removed their final 25%. If a county would still like to continue the sentencing to service program, they are full and able to if they're willing to pick up that loss of state funding. However, it might leave some counties to have a difficult decision as to whether or not that program is beneficial, given the funding constraints. And then lastly, there was just some changes to the Minnesota Rehabilitation and Reinvestment Act, really just giving the Commissioner of Corrections the ability to revoke the Earn Incentivized Release Credits. Previously, an individual was able to earn those without any opportunity to lose them, given their behavior in the facilities or anything of the sort. Now the commissioner, through the legislation, is now able to revoke those. It also does force the Commissioner of Correction to consider public safety factors when considering whether or not a person will have their Earn Incentivized Release Credits applied. And that is our Corrections and Public Safety.
Any questions at all? Any questions for Emilio?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'll start off with general government, and like others, just want to thank Blue Earth County staff. Laura Elbeback is the, she's the chair of our HR Directors Group that meets monthly. She's really been a valuable resource on E S S T and paid leave issues. On Earn, Sick, and Safe Time, we've been pursuing some larger changes to make sure that benefits don't stack up on one another and that essentially counties have some flexibility for already providing similar-type programs. There were some changes that passed the Senate that weren't able to get through the House. Basically, the most consequential change that ended up happening was under prior law. If you were taking more than three days of E S S T, you need to provide documentation. That's now reverted to two days. So if you're taking more than two consecutive days of E S S T, you need to provide some type of documentation. On paid leave, again, this kind of got wrapped up in a much larger discussion. This program's coming online January 1st. Basically, what ended up happening was they reduced the premium rate cap from 1.2% to 1.1%, but functionally, that's not going to have an impact on your budget because right now the rate is at 0.88%. Now, it's a variable rate, so it could change from year to year. The prior year had been at 0.77%, so it could potentially get up to 0.11% if participation in that program is much higher than they're anticipating, but right now, there's not really an impact on your budgets there. A couple of other things that I just wanted to briefly call out, the absentee ballot drop-off deadline in 2023. The legislature moved this for in-person drop-off to 3:00 p.m. We're moving it back to 5:00 p.m. Sorry, it moved from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and now we're moving Sorry, it moved from 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and now we're moving it back to 5:00 p.m. Looks like you all know what I'm talking about here. Some changes to the open meeting law were made to try and provide more flexibility and expand it just beyond medical and military purposes, and so that when people are participating remotely, they don't necessarily have to be in a public space, so you wouldn't have to be in like a coffee shop and say what coffee shop you were in. There were also some other changes that didn't happen around local sales tax general authorization that Senate arrest have been pursuing. You can go to the next slide. I did want to talk about pensions a little bit. A number of things happened in the pensions world this year. First, the duty disability modifications or PTSD issue. So basically, these are just changes that are prospective, but now, if you're claiming that benefit and you're deemed to receive that benefit, it's for five years rather than through age 65. This is basically because the people that were claiming this had really spiked, especially post-2020, and civil unrest in Minneapolis in particular, we just really saw it spiking though. So for the health of the fund, this change was made, but the legislature is also saying that, okay, if you're already receiving that benefit, no changes for you. So there's like no reduction in benefit for any individual. And this is really just to try to help the overall health of the police and fire fund, which is, I think, a little bit below 90% funded and is the only pension fund that's not scheduled to ever increase, rise closer to 100% funding. It's really stagnant slash slightly negative right now. Another thing in the pension world is that probation officers have been pursuing a separate pension benefit funded by their own increased employee contributions. The PARA, who oversees a lot of these discussions, raised some concerns about that, intergenerational equity, why an actuarial study done, so the legislature does what it does a lot when there's controversy or two sides oppose. It's like, okay, well, let's put everybody in a room and we'll study it over the interim. So I've been going to those meetings. They met yesterday. Emilio's been there too. And they're basically just kind of saying, okay, well, what are the probation officers asking for, and what are 911 telecommunications asking for, and what are all these other public safety adjustment, people asking for pension requests? I would say that 911 telecommunications are asking for increased employer contributions. Right now, the probation officers are not. From a county perspective, you know, we're always really hesitant about any time somebody's saying like, hey, let's increase employer contributions, right? Because where does that end up getting felt in county budgets and property taxes? So that's really our number one priority on that, is trying to do the best we can when it comes to representing the employers on that, the public employers on that side. But we are trying to participate in those conversations and make sure that we're part of, the group has said they're only going to bring forward recommendations if there's agreement amongst the public employer and public employee groups. Otherwise, it'll just be a report that basically says, here's what the public employees were asking for, here's what the public employers were saying. So there's a number of representatives on that group, including state, for both the employee and employer side. So you can go to the next slide. So I did want to cover, after all that, after what came into the state as depending how you counted, the $500 million temporary surplus and a $6 billion structural deficit in the out by AM, like where does that leave the state budget? And basically, there's still this structural deficit problem. If you look at, I think it's rows two and three, you can see projected spending is higher than projected revenues in this by AM and the next by AM, even after the changes that were made this session. This is data that MMB released. I just kind of reformat here to try and make a look there in July. So there still is that problem. But you do see at the kind of end of session balance that we have of almost $1.9 billion. So that's basically the surplus we have in this moment. The legislature didn't spend about $1.1 billion in discretionary inflation, so that was added to the $456 million temporary surplus, plus about another $300 million in savings. So that's kind of the picture that we'll have. If the data's going to change again, we've already seen fiscal year 2025, revenues ended up about $800 million higher than had been projected, but, you know, those numbers go up and down. In July, once the new fiscal year started, they were $62 million lower in that month alone. We're going to get a new economic forecast in December. I can't put on a crystal ball completely here, but I would say, I just wanted to note, and the U.S. economy is showing lower growth and higher inflation compared to what the economists were saying back when the February forecast was released. But I think Minnesota's economy has looked relatively resilient compared to a lot of other states. But what we're going to be talking about when it comes to the budget forecast being released, barring some gigantic surprise, is that we're going to have a temporary surplus that's relatively healthy and still has a structural deficit. If the legislature decides to roll over that $1.9 billion, then you'd just be talking about a $300 million deficit in the out by AM, or $289 million, I think is the number there. And then Minnesota still does have a really healthy budget reserve of $3.2 billion. So you can go to the next slide. These are just kind of the questions about what's next. Obviously, the passage of the O B V B A or H R 1 is causing significant uncertainty with the state budget. We did have Mingi, who's the State Budget Director, present to our board earlier this month, and they're still really trying to look at and suss out the fiscal impact of that. They don't have all that sorted yet. Obviously, a lot of that impact is going to be felt most directly at the county level. I did want to talk about, just briefly, we've got a few special elections coming up, a lot more than is typical. Technically, both the House and Senate majorities could flip. I think that based on just the political composition of those districts, most people assume each of those seats will stay with the incumbent party. And then the legislature comes back on February 17th. The governor's indicated any special session before then is very unlikely. So you can go to the next slide. This is just kind of our kind of final slide on what it looks like right now. MICA is in the process of setting our policy priorities for 2026, so that started with our board kind of identifying here's some of the big things that we really want this organization to focus on in 2026, what our top priorities are. And then it also happens at our committee level, whether it's environment, corrections, transportation, human services, taxes, and we try to dive into those issues a little bit more in depth as we build them. So, and then we'll ratify that, and it'll come back to the board later this year. May I go to the next slide? And this is just our contact information. Happy to answer any questions if you all have them, but really just appreciate you taking the time, really appreciate the work and the partnership we have with you and your staff too.
All right. Thank you, Nathan. Any questions for Nathaniel with the general government?
No. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
No, we really appreciate the organization too. Mark and I are the committee members that sit on air, and we've, well, I've seen a couple other executive directors, but you are filling the shoes of both of those gentlemen very well. I'm impressed with your presentation and knowledge of the state government, so appreciate all your work.
Thank you, I appreciate that. You know, I've joked before, it's like, before this, I was at the lead of Minnesota cities, but like, don't hold that against the group. Like, happy to work.
We're a pretty open group. We didn't hold it against you, and I'm glad we did.
For long.
You do a great job. Thank you. We just got some updates to do, and I think you're joining us for lunch, I believe?
Yes.
So, okay. All right. We got the update out of the way, so we got some commissioner reports. Vance, I will start with you today.
All right. Our last board meeting was the 5th, and let's see, I had a, is that right? That's right. I had a T Z D Steering Committee meeting on the 7th, and, you know, that's about all I had.
Quiet.
I had a couple weeks.
Very short and easy. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Mark?
Okay, I had, on the August 8th, Friday, it was some, all seasons reunion, it's a virtual, and as we found out there earlier, that yeah, just had some change orders, and we took care of that. And then went to that Farm Bureau annual meeting on Tuesday, the August 12th, and then we did have, I went to August 13th, which was a G M G roundtable with our representative, Brad Finstead, and others who were here were there too. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Kevin?
Since our August board meeting, on the 7th, was soil water conservation meeting. On the 8th, there was a sewer, one watershed, one plan meeting. August 9th, I participated at breakfast on the farm. On the 11th, CASA 10 meeting, I had an onsite meeting there, as well as a call on some rapid end water issues. A Farm Bureau meeting on the 12th has been mentioned, as well as a Finstead meeting with G M G on the 13th. August 14th, we had a J D 40 landowner meeting, as well as participated with AMC, with the Congressman Finstead, call on SNAP and the Pheasants Forever Tour. The 16th, met with staff and constituents on some septic issues with septic replacement. And then the 17th was the fly-in breakfast at the airport, and then this morning, our J D 9 meeting prior to this board meeting. That completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Patty?
All righty. On the 6th, I attended the United Way Women with Heart luncheon, and over 800 people there, so very well attended. On the 7th was a call, an Inside Washington call. On the 12th, I too attended the Farm Bureau annual meeting. 13th, the G M G roundtable with Representative Finstead and Region 9 that evening. And then that is it. I had something come up at home, so I missed a couple meetings last week. That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other than the ones that were already mentioned, I was at township officers meeting for the Area 2, which has several townships in the area over the Decoria Township Hall, and they had a relatively good turnout. That's their group larger than our group, so it was interesting. I just was able to stay for a few minutes because I had to get to the planning and zoning meeting, which y'all have seen that already, because we passed all those this morning. Then SW C D meeting, everything went really well there. Had a Farm Bureau meeting, which I was, neat that they called us out, and we're appreciative that all five of us were there, but I think we set the table pretty high there now.
Yeah, I think I forgot to say I was there, so.
So we were, we were noticed that all five of us were there, so. And then some Ponderosa landfill discussions and R F D discussions and some other administrative discussion, and a lot of calls from constituents regarding drainage and the cost of drainage and washouts. I'm not sure why we didn't get as many calls last year with washouts and erosion as we are this year, but maybe because the dam failed last year and these little projects weren't so important. But I've gotten a lot of calls this year with washouts, culverts, road ditches, just reaching out to Ryan quite a bit. And then I think the highlight of the couple weeks was the Highway 14 Eagle Lake connection. Lot of discussion. They had a public open house again, and then they went into their session, and the council decided to approve the High T, the Casis. And we really struggled with that as a county because it really doesn't do any regionalization for our county roads. So we're at an impasse here with trying to get some sort of agreement between the City of Eagle Lake and the county to try to move out and try to get some funding. So more to come on that, but that's been a lot of work for Ryan and his staff too. Appreciate all their help. And that concludes my report. So I believe that brings us to the end of our agenda.
That's correct. A move to recess.
All right. Have a motion. Motion to second to recess. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are recessed. Thank you, everyone, for your time.